The meeting to order, roll call please.
Mayor, no.
Here?
Mr. Donnie?
Here.
Mr. Beanfield?
Here.
Ms. Van Damme?
Here.
Mr. Burdette?
Here.
Here.
Ms. Mara?
Here.
Notice of this meeting was provided to the Burnsville News Courier News and the Star Ledger, filed with the municipal clerk and posted on the municipal bulletin board on December 11th, 2018. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we have no presentations, so we will go right to open session. So we welcome comments from any of the members of the public. If you wish to be heard, please come up to the microphone and give Anthony your name and address. And we will, what already says it, we're going to limit comments to three minutes. If you have a prepared statement that you want to read, please make sure you give Anthony a copy. So, do we have any members of the public who would like to speak at this point? Okay, I will close the public hearing, or public session. Items of business, we have an ordinance for introduction. This is public works related, so I introduce that.
I'm going to move that ordinance 2019-1804, an ordinance fixing responsibility for the repair and maintenance of sewer laterals and supplementing and amending chapter 16 of the Borough Code entitled Sewer Regulation. Be introduced by title, passed on first reading, published according to law. And that a public hearing is scheduled for a meeting beginning at 7:00 PM, Monday, June 24th, 2019. I'll second.
A second, okay. And this is basically the change, if I'm correct, is making sure that the owner is responsible for repairs to the laterals, is that pretty much?
Yeah, this is memorializing a decades-old practice, just to make it clear
Right.
that the owner is responsible for the lateral up to the main.
Right, okay, so...
So it's not really changing anything, it's just memorializing existing practice?
That's right, there's a question of those that someone's figured out.
Okay.
So this is making sure everybody knows it. Okay, voice vote, roll call?
Voice, sorry.
A voice, oh god, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I was trying to read this and this at the same time, not a good thing to do. The next is, well, I don't know, I'm going to move this, how's that? Again, I know I can't.
Before you move it, Mayor, you've asked that a qualification paragraph be added with these members of the committee to have the residence of the borough and should have some background, either through education or experience, associated with cultural and/or performing arts. And events that such persons are not available or willing to serve then end residents of the borough being qualified by the governing body may be appointed to serve.
Yeah, that was in Hanover's ordinance, so I thought that was a good thing to add. It's just, you know, it's not excluding people, but it's kind of saying, you know, the first people we'd like to have are people with some kind of experience. So I think that was the only change.
I couldn't quite hear, did it also, did it say you had to be a resident of the community?
Yes.
I'd like to discuss that, because I could see the value of having someone who has a business in town, an art gallery for example, but who doesn't necessarily live here.
That's a good point.
That would engage them, they would help promote their business and, but also the town. And so I could, I could see where, you know, the owner of a bookstore, the owner of a music store, for example, we have all those things, they may be valuable assets.
Or even somebody in the next town who does, has a performing arts group or something, might be.
But does the wording say that we would look for these folks, but in the event that they're not available? What we're saying is that...
Yeah, that qualifies for the qualification section.
That was for the...
Resident's, resident's of the borough.
Okay.
So...
So why don't we, let's strike that, yeah, that's not that important.
You can always make the practice when practicable.
Yeah.
We could say when practicable, is that...
No, let's just leave it at that.
Yeah.
It's up to you all to make the appointments.
We good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's a good point, thank you Jeff.
So, I'm...
Anything else?
Do you want me to read, to move it?
Sure.
I move that ordinance 2019-1805, an ordinance creating a cultural arts advisory committee and supplementing and amending chapter two of the Borough Code entitled Administration. Be introduced by title, passed on first reading, published according to law and that a public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning at 7:00 PM, Monday, June 24th, 2019.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we'll get the final version before we do the...
I'll send Anthony into the margin.
Okay, great. Okay, now we have resolutions 19122 through 19129, are we added 129?
Yeah.
Anybody want to discuss any of those separately?
Just in a chance, 19126, you just, I wanted to ask Jack about the inactive licenses. Oh yeah?
This is for the ABC licenses, so I think that, your question was...
The inactive ones, I mean, is there any way we can make it kind of a user-delusor scenario?
It's all set by state regulations.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, I think I'll too, but just, thought we'd ask.
Yeah.
Well, but when I read the material, it said something about having been granted a waiver. Do we have any say in those granting of waivers?
I guess we could have objected, but I don't think we'd notice anything when you apply.
They applied last year for a two-year term, so they got a special ruling for last year and for this year. If next year comes around, they will have to get another ruling to the state, you know, another special ruling before we can renew them for next year.
Could you do, could you diary for that, like in ten months, so we can be ahead of the curve on that?
Is that, is that the state's decision, or do we get to have input on that?
It's the state's decision.
If it's the state's decision, I don't know, if we can, can deny it.
Think, right, I mean, I don't know, but...
We can check on that.
If you could diary for that, just like ten months out, so we can stay two months earlier than the due date, make sure we don't miss any opportunity to...
Have some input.
Yeah, exactly.
I'll check for those, if there are options, we'll be there.
Okay, um...
I did a...
Go ahead.
I had a question on 122, the payment of bills.
Uh-huh.
This is not necessarily, I'm not objecting to payment of the bill, but when I was looking through that, I noticed that there was a payment to topology. And I'm just wondering, where do we stand with that, weren't we supposed to have gotten a plan from them, now? That we had delayed it to the end of May, I believe, and then...
The planning board just approved, that recently, there was a question of the certification of funds, and I think they just approved the contract, they realized we need some.
So that's their initial payment, but what I think what Jeff's asking is, you know, we haven't heard from them yet, they were here, was it last month? To do their initial walkthrough, I'm not sure when we were supposed to get feedback from them.
Well, they had the RFP, and then they, we extended the RFP.
Yeah, doesn't the extended date was like June 1st, or May 30th?
July 1st. But that's, what they're doing is the standardized, the standard architect, the architectural standards, that's what topology's doing, I believe, oh no, is that the one? No, I've mixed up these companies.
If it's the one that we did most recently, just because it has, sitting on the planning board meeting, I think what this is related to was the examination of area need of redevelopment.
Yes, that's right.
During the train station, though.
And the train station.
Train station, and now you say, so this is the work related to those.
So do we have sort of a master, a revised master timeline of where things, all these moving parts stand?
Not from the development committee, we can ask for it, certainly.
Yeah, why don't we ask for them to update us?
I'd like to have a sense of where we're going here.
Or at least tell us when they're going to be updating us, like, we only have one meeting in July, right? So that would be, seem to be the logical meeting to have it?
Yeah.
What's our meeting date in July?
The 8th.
July 8th?
8th?
I believe so, yeah.
Really, right after the holiday weekend?
I can look and see.
Is it the Tuesday?
I'm traveling July.
Yes, July, that's the second Monday of July.
And there's no other meetings in July, correct?
That's correct.
I'm not here at that meeting, for that meeting, that makes...
Anybody else not here, I mean, that's, no, it might be worth checking, because it is the holiday week, it's like the first week after 4th of July, which a lot of...
We'd have enough time to change it if we...
Yeah.
It takes a long time to the next meeting.
So why don't we discuss in our next, on June 24th, we can discuss the schedule for the July meeting, whether we move it?
Yeah, we might move it to the 16th or something.
Something that's amenable to the maximum number of people or something?
It's like, that's a big vacation week, so...
So we'll communicate during the week, this week, about the July timeframe?
Okay.
And then put it on the June 24th?
Or maybe, yeah, Anthony, maybe you can send everybody an email just asking vacation plans and who's available. Even for the whole summer, because I know people have plans, and maybe get everybody's travel schedule for the summer. You're here all summer? I just had a question on the change fund, is that basically a petty cash account that you were setting up for them?
It's really just a change fund, just as it is, there's one, the construction department has one. And it's not a petty cash, it's a change fund, but then...
Oh, you mean when people come in to pay things, they can give, I got it, okay.
Yeah, it's not as, it's not gone to the like, as cash, it's just...
To make change when people are paying fines or...
What happens is the zoning and housing, when they buy the zoning permits, it takes from the construction.
Oh, they use that one.
And they, you know, they run out of money, so...
So now they'll have their own, okay.
So now they have their own.
Anybody, any other issues on any of these?
No.
The last one we added, is there, are they, 129 is not on your agendas. This one we added to cancel some unexpendited balances in other capital ordinances, so that we can get Mount Harmony Road paved, because that, we've been getting a lot of complaints, and it's a real safety issue over there, so that's what we've added, to try and get that project in, in July.
Yeah, I think the other criteria is, is that to also try and get it done before it gets to a point where it would be more expensive to do it later.
Right.
So, this, by spending less money now, hopefully we can avoid a bigger expense in a year from now.
And there's also a gas pipe issue that we're trying to work out, that hopefully they can, because once it's paved, there's going to be a moratorium and opening it again. So we might find a spot to stub up one of the pipes to get the natural gas, run two or two up there. So that's still being worked out.
Alright, so, somebody want to move 19122 to 19129?
I'll second.
Alright, roll call vote.
Mr. Donnie?
Yes.
Mr. Beanfield?
Yes.
Ms. Van Damme?
Yep.
Mr. Burdette?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Mara?
Yes.
Okay, 6C, we have a pesticide draft resolution, this is the one I think, Jack, you've done based on Basking Ridge? For Burnsville?
The one that was circulated today was based on Basking Ridge, the prior one was based on a model resolution that Christine and Ken came up with, a, I think that can be working.
Right, so I think what we're going to do with this is, we're still, we're waiting for the soil samples before we act on it, but if everyone could read it and get any comments back, I know we just got it this morning, but if you have input on it, so that when we get the soil test back, we can come back and look at this.
Were we going to, some sort of pricing of what, moving to this integrated program?
Well, that's after we get the soil test, yeah, that's, that's kind of what the key piece is, to see what, how much work has to be done based on that. Jackie, were going to give us some background on the accessory dwelling units?
I did speak to John Zabo, and probably I should have taken a class session.
Okay. Ordinance Township Ordinance, individual and semi-public water supply and soil permeability testing. Diane, you brought this from the Health Department?
Yes.
You know, the Board of Health can adopt its own ordinances.
Really?
In fact, if you look in the code book, there's a section at the back, Board of Health Ordinances, and I noticed Burners Township Board of Health could adopt this one.
They could, but they, they, well, Burners Township did it, but she gave it to me and asked if we would be interested, just, I said I would bring it, let me do it, I mean...
I think the council would probably do it too, I just, I noticed it was the Board of Health that considered that.
Comments?
Do we have any, I mean, we're contracting with the Burners Township Board of Health, do we have any say in the matter, I mean?
Yes.
I mean, I read the ordinance, and it was all very interesting, but I was wondering why we're being asked to consider it.
Well, we don't have anything on, I, I brought it to Jack to find out if we had anything on the books like this. I think Burners Township was doing it mainly as a source of revenue also, because they're charging fees for checking whether if somebody is adding on to a property, if they're more than 20, you have to go out and be certified that you're not more than 20 feet, less than 20 feet from your well. I think it was a way to generate income, and that was one of the reasons that they were pushing it. I don't know whether they've had problems with this in the past, I don't know whether we did. I just brought it up because they gave it to me, and I figured we could take a look at it and see if anybody was interested in doing it here or not.
Sounds like that falls under housing and zoning almost more than health, but yeah, I see what you're saying.
Well, they asked to do a septic, so...
I'm sorry, Jack, I didn't...
Yeah, they asked to do the septic and water supply.
Right, well, it's mostly, yeah, about the well, and I think it's just keeping people from putting in addition over their well without realizing where it is, and...
But don't we already have that, under, Jeff is not here, but I thought we already have those type of ordinances?
Jack said you didn't see it.
Why don't, why don't we ask the Board of Health to review it?
Well, that's, it's, isn't that where you came from?
That's where I got it from.
No, no, their Board of Health or our Board of Health?
Ours.
Ours. So our Board of Health reviewed it, and they're, are they making a recommendation?
No, what happened was, no, 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 the Board of Health, Basking Ridge, based on, I guess they all worked it out together, and they passed it in Basking Ridge, Lucy gave it to me.
The Basking Ridge Board of Health passed it?
Well, yeah, well, that's us too.
No, the relationship is...
You're on the Board of Health here. Yes, but Basking Ridge will, yeah.
The relationship's tricky, because they administer our health ordinances, but we have our own Board of Health that adopts its own ordinances. So, so we don't follow Burners Township Health ordinances, we have our own, even though they administer it.
So that's my point.
They gave it to me in the meeting.
The Basking Ridge Board of Health?
No, Burners. Okay, the Bask, alright, Lucy is at the Burners Township Board of Health, but she's part of our...
Yes.
Meeting, at our meeting, with our Burnsville people. She gave me the ordinance and said, Basking Ridge passed it, it, you want, might be something you want to look at.
Okay, so they gave it to us as a sample?
So did the, did the Board of Health discuss it, the Burnsville Board of Health?
They, no, nobody, nobody had anything to say about it, they said, okay.
So why don't we take it back to them and ask them to make a recommendation?
Okay, that's fine, I'll let them do that.
When do they need again?
Diane, maybe ask them why their Board of Health adopted it, she wants our council to adopt it, just seems...
They, I did ask why their Board of Health adopted it, and she said basically it was a revenue...
No, 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 I mean, procedurally, their Board of Health, as opposed to the township committee, adopted it.
Okay, probably, so, yeah, because if the committee, if our Board of Health wants to do it, they can do it themselves, is what you're saying, they don't, it doesn't have to come to us. So why don't we have them, next, at your next meeting, to, you know, ask them for their decision?
It's July.
And let them do it, okay. 6F, the use of New Jersey DEP recommended bonide, is that what you're saying? Bonide burnout to treat weeds in the grass areas? Doug, that was your conversation with them?
Yeah, I had a conversation with the New Jersey DEP, wanting to use our warning tracks and field, and they suggested this product, say, this clover, and citrus acid. The only issue we would have is that we have to coordinate the subs until it's over, because we have to be on-site when it's applied, you don't have that license, you don't have, you know, but we have to present, we can include ourselves when it were, you know, present, so we're supposed to leave.
Okay.
So hoping to be coordinated that, maybe then you get a few or four volunteers in both fields, you know, like an hour and a half or something, that we're at home, so the council's approval to use that. I forwarded all the information on that for everyone.
Right, and it doesn't even require an MSDS sheet at all, so...
Well, that's the question I had, since this exempt from the EPA requirements, would this, if we were to pass the ordinance or resolution related to organics that we talked about a little bit earlier, would this be, would this be one of the approved agents?
Yes.
Yes?
It's a yes, okay.
Citric acid and vinegar, basically.
And it goes on non-grassy areas, right, like the infill, the warning tracks?
It's non-discriminating, just...
Because it's just everything?
Yeah, and you don't have to go out and pull the weeds, Christine.
Citric acid and clove oil.
Clove oil, wow, that ought to smell good.
So anyone can...
I'd use it, it smells like salad dressing.
Yeah, I was going to say. I researched it, they said it works. At least it would take care of those, the non-grass areas, and we don't have to go ahead and find people to pull the weeds. Is everybody alright with that?
Yep.
Get that going, okay, thanks Doug. Alright.
Okay, thank you.
Salads.
That's right.
Salad dressing, okay, these are orderly up to Mayor's update. So, on May 30th, actually Jeff and I attended the Somerset County Business Alliance Networking Event at the Burnerton, which was, actually, a lot, all Somerset County businesses, I thought it was interesting. We had some good conversations with some people, some ideas circulated for other things we can do, so that was, I don't, I guess they have them once a month in different towns, so, and also I went to the Ladies Night Out, which was sponsored by Somerset Hills Chiropractic, but a lot of our local businesses participated, and Terry was there, Christine, you were there too, it was really a nice event, and it was a miserable pouring raining night, and they still had a good turnout, so it was a good downtown activity. On May 31st, some of you may have seen the paper, Congressman Malinowski was here at Bonnie Sellers' request to observe the downtown, look at our empty stores, they wanted to go over the Quimby Lane Plan with him, and we were also doing a grand opening at Summit Prep, so he took part in that as well. So, and he, I think he spent a good hour here, so, and gave us some ideas for possible grants and people to contact, so it was a useful day. June 1st, we had the grand opening of the Butterfly Garden, thank you Christine for all your work on that. If you haven't seen it yet, go over to Kiwanis Field, it's really, it's just, it really came out well, and thank you Doug for all your help with that.
Went up very quickly too, I think they were, they were here and like a month later it was done.
Yeah, yeah. June 3rd, I met with the people from Sherwin-Williams, who are very interested in contributing to our mural painting, so they're going to go back to their main office and see what they can do for us, but they were real excited about it. Tom and I and Doug met with Ed Caldwell that day as well, to look at the snack shack, Veterans Field, and different things that we might be able to do there.
And I believe they're meeting tonight to discuss scheduling of the field?
Yeah, to decide if they're going to use the field for their games or practices. We also had another Mayor's Wellness Committee meeting, Jeff had brought up the idea of a Walk with a Doc program, that's, I guess it's a national program, yes? Where you have a, well, maybe you explain it.
Well, it is, it is a national program, and it, I think it's in 55 municipalities or something along those lines, and growing, and basically the idea would be that, that promote wellness physicians or other allied health personnel would organize walks, and you'd commit for a dozen walks a year. They would supply insurance and some other goodies to help promote it, and, and material for, for people to discuss if you didn't have your own topics, it's, it's something we could do, it just has a catchy name, it's more than anything else, that you'd like to, I've been racking my brain for other synonyms that we could steal, but I haven't come up with anything. And it's a, it's a modest fee, it's I think $590 to get access to their material and to their website. And it was just something that I had, actually, Councilwoman Samara had brought it up to me, I'd seen it at the Bridgewater Commons Mall, there's a cardiologist down there who's sponsoring it, and thought we might be able to bring this to the town under the Wellness Committee.
Yeah, and the Wellness Committee thought it was a great idea as well, so we just have to kind of coordinate where, where the walks would be and how we would participate in this organization. The other thing, the Mayor's Wellness Committee is going to sponsor on June 26th, the Self-Defense Class for Women. It's also, it's geared towards teenagers going off to college to help them be aware of safety issues when they go out of town to a new environment, and City Gym is going to have it, and Jay Walker is going to pay for admission for any, I mean, I think it's up to 20 people, so you'll be seeing more about that. And if it's, if it goes over well, we'll try and do a few more, because I think it's something that might be popular. June 9th, yes, Sunday, we did the milkweed planting, we had a donation of 550 milkweed plants, which I thought were going to be this big, and they were like that big. So we planted them, some more at the Butterfly Garden at Kiwanis, we did some at the Polo Grounds, I think they're, Alice Struble took some for the middle school gardens, and there's still some out there that have to be done yet, but we really did a, thank you Gina for your help yesterday. We got a lot in the ground, so hopefully we'll support the monarchs, that's part of the Mayor's Monarch Pledge, that if you want more information on that, you need to talk to Kathleen Palmer, because she is the expert on monarchs. Oh, and you wanted me to bring up the shared court, so, I had to, I had to back up on that. The, is it Bedminster?
Yes.
Has asked to join the, has expressed an interest in joining our shared court? I mean, Burners Township, it's Bedminster, us, and... P-PAC, right now, so what they would like to do is become part of that, so... At this point, I think what they were looking for is for us to have a meeting, they did do a official letter saying that they have interest, so from this point, where do we go from here?
Well, in the past, since we started this with P-PAC and Bedminster, there's been a representative from the council and a representative from my, I've seen administrative offices, that attends meetings when necessary, when they've got a new hire, when there's a, something like this, when someone tries to join the group, it's just, there's no set time for it, it's just when the event comes up. And I've gone to the last two, I think, without a council representative, and, you know, I'm asked about that. So, I, I guess, and then we have a request to set the time for a meeting for this, and Judy over at Bedminster asked again, who was that we made on, from the council, so... I can't wear that hat too, so I'm looking, looking for someone.
You know, they usually meet in the morning, is it, you said 8:00 or 8:30?
Anytime they do meet, it's usually like 8:00 AM, in the morning, in Bedminster.
Oh, we got a volunteer, I heard a volunteer. Thank you. Alright, good.
I'm just curious, to ask, Ralph, in your opinion, I mean, if, if Burners Township were to join this shared court, would that create, because they're reasonably sized, would that create more of a backlog than we already have? I mean, there are already some, some issues with that.
You know, Jeff, without meeting with them yet to, to give the actual particulars, I couldn't give you a, you know, definitive answer, but I happen to agree with your instincts.
Would they, would they bring more either financial or legal resources, they come, so it'd be, there'd be some balancing?
Yes, it would be, it would be balanced out proportionally, it always is. And even with the three of us, we pay our...
A percentage?
Based on the tickets and the, you know, and all of the good stuff, it's, you know, it's a very, not complicated, but it's a very detailed process, how we, how the payments will work out.
So that's what the purpose of the meeting would be, for us to have a better understanding of what the impact would be in terms of number of cases processed, but then also what the increase in resources would be on the flip side?
Because it's not a matter of cost, and my understanding right now is that they need more judges as it is, so it's a matter of personnel, not cost.
Well, it would be cost, personnel equals cost, of course, yeah, very well put, yeah, personnel equals cost, so...
Yes, it does.
You're correct, obviously, the people that are there now could not, it's just common sense, just could not, Burners Township, I mean...
Okay, so we have a volunteer to attend that meeting, and I guess you will update us as it goes on. The other question I had for the council is, I don't know, is anybody planning to go to the League of Municipalities Conference in November?
I am.
It's November 19th to the 21st?
I thought it was very good last year, I went for one day, but it was great.
I could, what, what date is it?
November 19th to the 21st, there are two nights, you know, well, you don't have to go for both nights, but it runs two days actually, it's...
I don't, I don't think I'll be here at those dates.
I guess it's the week before Thanksgiving?
Yeah, I don't think I'm here.
I'm a definite maybe.
A definite maybe?
Yeah, it depends on work travel. I'll commit to it.
I wanted to go last year, but I couldn't, but I want to go this year.
Okay. Just because they already have, you know, they start now with the housing, so if you don't get on the list, it gets harder to get committed. Okay, do we have any correspondence? I don't think I saw any. Any unfinished business? Anything that's hanging out there? New business?
New business, the ordinance for Mount Harmy Road.
Ah, okay, there we go. You have, yes, okay, yes, go ahead.
You'd ordained by the Borough of Burnsville, I'm sorry, the Borough Council of the Borough of Burnsville, County of Somerset, New Jersey as follows. Section 1, the total sum of $270,000 is hereby appropriated in the amount of $165,135 from the Capital Improvement Fund, and $104,865 from the capital fund balance for the repair of Mount Harmy Road, including but not limited to milling, paving, and centerline striping. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect immediately upon final passage and publication as required by law.
This is the introduction of this ordinance?
This is, we're introducing it, right?
Right.
So we'll have a second hearing?
Our hearing will be Monday, June 24th, 2019, the 7th, yeah.
Okay. So that's just a, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that's done. 7:30. Would it be horrible if I opened up for one more public session, just because we're so early? I know. Anybody care? Can we?
Sorry, me.
Anyone from the public have something that they want to share? And just know, because some people came in later, and give you a chance to talk if someone wants to. Okay, we are then...
I'm moving.
Moving, okay. Second. All right, so we are in closed session. I think this is a record.
That was good, say. Very refreshing.
Thank you for coming. Take some Oreo raisins cookies.